Good evening, everyone. It is six o'clock. I'm calling the city councilman meeting for June fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two to order. Please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mayor Thompson, here.
Mayor Protem Estes?
Here.
Member Hinton?
Here.
Member Corey?
Here.
Member Rick? Member Applegate?
Here.
Member Duncan?
Present.
I have six members present. Member Rick has notified stop of his absence.
All right. Thank you very much. We're on to item four point one, presentations. We have three presentations tonight. The first one is a proclamation declaring that henceforth, June nineteenth will be recognized as Juneteenth National Independence Day or Juneteenth. And we have a proclamation here. Whereas the Civil War, which raged for four years between April eighteen sixty-one and April eighteen sixty-five, officially ended with the surrender of General Lee to General Grant at Appomattox on April ninth, eighteen sixty-five. However, even after this turning point, many parts of the country remained at war. And whereas, despite the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation on January first, eighteen sixty-three, the initial step in ending slavery, it had no effect on slaves in areas where Confederate forces held control. And whereas, it was the continuing drama which took place between the signing of the Emancipation Proclamation and the actual conclusion of the North-South fighting that provided the backdrop to the establishment of June nineteenth as Emancipation Day. And whereas, the last battle of the Civil War was fought at Palmetto Hill on Texas soil from May twelfth to thirteen eighteen sixty-five. And whereas, approximately one month later, on June nineteenth, eighteen sixty-five, General Gordon Granger of the Union Army arrived at Galveston proclaiming the authority of the United States over Texas in the name of then-President Andrew Johnson. And whereas, in so proclaiming this authority, General Granger declared all acts of the Confederacy null and void and announced slaves were henceforth set free. And whereas, not caring so much as to which day freedom had come as to the fact it had come, and slaves referred to this day as Juneteenth, which provides the historical reference. And whereas, during the years immediately following their emancipation, the freed men and women established a tradition of picnic, music, and Thanksgiving, and used the occasion to reflect upon the profound meaning of their freedom, the freedom to choose a life direction, manner of earning a livelihood, and creating a community in which freed slaves might live with dignity. And whereas, Juneteenth was officially recognized as a federal holiday in June of two thousand and twenty-one. And whereas, it is important of the City of Fountain to recognize this historic event. Now therefore, be it proclaimed by the City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado, that June nineteenth will henceforth be recognized in the City of Fountain as Juneteenth National Independence Day and encourages all citizens regardless of race or ethnic background to learn more about Juneteenth and its important role in our American history. Furthermore, the city shall officially add the Juneteenth holiday to the list of recognized holidays for the city employees to commemorate this occasion done this fourteenth day of June, two thousand and twenty-two. That is the proclamation. Would anyone like to say anything? Okay, seeing none, is there any... We don't really vote into proclamation, but we usually just affirm them. So would the council like to affirm this proclamation? If you... We don't have the voting up, so... Councilmember Hinton?
I affirm this proclamation of June nineteenth.
All right. Thank you. Does everyone else concur? Councilmember Corey? Yeah? Councilmember Estes?
I concur.
Councilmember Applegate? Councilmember Duncan?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Great. Thank you. All righty. Presentation to Fountain Police... Thank you. Presentation to Fountain Police K-nine unit from Fountain Up. Fountain Up, who is representing you tonight? Everybody, come on down.
Hello, I'm Rosa. I'm part of Fountain Up, and we're going to present a check to... The police department. Our event was two weekends ago, and it was great. We had about sixteen families join us and then a bunch of people from the community. So we made about three thousand thirty-one dollars.
Fantastic. Rosa, can you come back since there's some... We have an audience tonight, actually. Can you kind of explain the purpose of Fountain Up and what you guys are doing in the community?
Well, we wanted to bring events back to the downtown area of the community, invite families to come and just have a good time. It's Fountain Ultimate Party, so Fountain Up.
Okay, and you had a Halloween dance?
We've had two events. We've had a nightmare on Main Street.
Yeah.
Oh, well, three now. And then we did a Christmas event. What was that called? Miracle on Main Street, where we let kids shop for their parents. And then we had our Bark in the Park. And then our next one is a Brew Fest that we're having at our park.
All right. And then all the proceeds are going to different things?
Proceeds go... Some of them go to the next event that we have. Because, I mean, when we started off, the people on the committee put our own money into it to start it off. So now we're raising money. So this one, we decided to raise money for a new canine. And then the Brew Fest will go to the next event.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right.
When is the Brew Fest?
The Brew Fest is Fourth of July weekend, so July second. And tickets are sold. You can find it on our Facebook page.
But if you just show up, you'll sell them a ticket, right?
Depends. No, we have limited amount of tickets. We've already exceeded half of them, so we have about two hundred left.
So if they want a ticket, they better get it quick.
Yes, because we will sell out. We have twenty brewers committed to this.
Fantastic. Congratulations. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chief Heber, I think you have somebody that's almost the same height as you finally on the department?
Which one?
This gentleman here?
Oh, yeah. He's a future chief of policing training right here. He's gonna be it. He cooks, he cleans. He's single, by the way. You know, he's single. Just throw that out there.
I didn't go down that path. I was just talking about the pipe.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. We just... Madam Mayor, I just want to thank Fountain Up. Great community. They're doing a lot of good things for our citizens to pull us together. A lot of everything that's going on in the world. These events are very positive. They're very safe. We encourage our citizens to come out and visit and get to know everybody. This last event, we had Fort Carson and their canine team come down and do demonstrations, plus our canine. For those that you don't know, Canine Amp is retiring this year. She graduated this year with Fountain Fort Carson High School, where she was very popular with the students and got... Built a lot of interaction with some kids that, you know, maybe didn't feel comfortable talking to police. They all loved Amp. So that's very positive. The total cost for a new dog is somewhere around twelve or thirteen thousand dollars. So these three thousand dollars really helps out the program. And the new dog will go back in the school district. We've selected him. He's a golden retriever mix. His name will be Boomer, and he will be based out of the Fountain Middle School, and you'll see him traveling around. So thanks everyone very much.
And the canine officer assigned to this gentleman?
Yeah, this is Brett Ryder. He's been with us for going on six years. He was very excited to take over as a canine officer. His canine Goose. In particular, yesterday, they got a bus seizing eighteen fentanyl pills off our streets, mushrooms, pretty significant drug bust that I sent to you on that daily report. So that's what he was up to last night. It was officer initiated, and it keeps our kids and our community safer. So great job last night, Canine Brett Ryder.
And I also saw that we had two vests sponsored for the officers, so the bulletproof and staff-proof vests.
Yes. Yeah, we just have such great support within the, you know, canine community and citizens. And in particular, for this donation, two of our citizens in the business gave a donation of one thousand dollars each. So just hats off, and thank you very much on behalf of our entire organization. Thank you very much.
All right. Thank you. They do great work. Thank you. We had someone trying to break into our house one night, and all it took was that dog barking in the car, not even out of the car yet. The guy was like, "I'm done. I'm done." So they work. They do their work. All right, we have a request for an audience by Susan Kircher for a presentation of signatures for a grocery store. Susan? If you could, if you could come up to the microphone and introduce yourself for the record, and anybody that speaks is gonna have to come down here.
Yeah. Greetings. Good evening, everybody. City Council, Mayor. I'm Susan Kircher, and thank you for granting us the audience. And first Carol's going to speak, then Max, then I'll speak again, Patrick, and then we'll present the signatures, and then I'll wrap it up.
Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Thompson. I'm council member. My name is Carol Rafferty, and I'm here with LEAF, which stands for Let Everyone Access Fresh Food, as well as concerned citizens bringing a crucial issue to your attention. Downtown Fountain needs an affordable grocery store now. The economic impact for Fountain would be an increase in sales tax revenue, increase in business for small businesses that would see more foot traffic, as well as new jobs for Fountain residents and now youth. More jobs and tax revenue results in more opportunities for Fountain residents. Therefore, we are asking you for a grocery store as soon as possible, as we cannot wait another year to pass with no results.
Hi, City Council. My name is Max Kronstadt, and I will be reading a statement from Fountain resident John Holtman, who was planning to be here today but was sick. So he said, "Hello, my name is John Holtman, and I am a sixty-five-year-old diabetic resident of Fountain. I want to thank you for your time this evening for us to give you our recommendations for a grocery store in the downtown area of our wonderful city. As a diabetic, it is very important to have a healthy diet. The diet guidelines of Americans recommend the consumption of two and a half cups of fresh vegetables and two cups of fresh fruits every day. As of now, all we have as a choice is canned and pre-processed fruits and vegetables. As we all know, the City of Fountain is growing and progressing, and our committee feels it's in the best interest for our city to have a grocery store with fresh fruits and vegetables and other food types for our best health in our downtown area, and not to have to drive down eighty-five, eighty-seven or to the Mesa. Thank you for your time."
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and city staff members. My name is Patrick Trossper. I've lived here for about ten years in Fountain. I'm gonna get off track for just a second. I've seen the city grow, and I've seen it change and morph. And I have an elderly couple across the street that I've known for majority of my life, and we finally caught back up to each other. They're ninety-six and ninety-four. Neither one of them should be driving. The lady goes out once a week to go grocery shopping. Neither of them are safe to drive. One of them has finally stopped driving because he's hunched over like this. And it's kind of sad to see people that probably shouldn't be behind the wheel driving up eighty-five, eighty-seven to go to a grocery store. And they live right across the street from me. I'm on Mountain View Lane. And it would be more convenient if they wouldn't have to be on a major highway. Granted, part of it's highway, part of it's not. I will continue with my speech now. Let everyone access fresh food. I've been with for just about a year now, and I've seen a need. We were directed by Fountain Herbal Renewal Authority. We went there, and they directed us to the Economic Development Council. We've been there. They've helped us put together a letter of support to show you guys exactly what the community is supporting. We had... I will tell you right now, there's six hundred and forty-six signatures right here. Okay? It's a drop in the bucket, yes. But we only had two people turn us down. Two. "To the council of City of Fountain, we, the undersigned residents of Fountain, ask that the City of Fountain use any and all resources needed to attract, facilitate the development of a grocer in the Old Town District. We ask this because the district was deemed a food desert by the Colorado Housing and Financial Authority in tandem with the City of Fountain in two thousand and sixteen." I'm gonna let that soak in for just a second. "In the six years since going on seven, no grocer has entered the district. Life expectancy is reduced on average by eight years for residents with limited or no access to fresh produce and/or healthy prepaid foods. Many in the district struggle to make ends meet, and having to travel far to get groceries or spend more on food by shopping at nearby convenience stores makes it harder. And to any grocer interested in Fountain, we, the undersigned residents of Fountain, encourage you to work with the city government and community groups to bring a grocery store to the Old Town District and assure you that your store will have our full support." I would like to present these to the mayor along with the promise that we're not going anywhere until it's done. Thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
Thanks, Max. Thanks, Carol. And just to conclude, thank you very much. LEAF would like to acknowledge to the city and staff, thank you, everybody, for everything that's happened so far and your current efforts. We'd like to acknowledge your current efforts of the city, and we really appreciate that. We'd like to request the council to direct the staff to have the city take the necessary steps to coordinate conditions favorable for the swift implementation of the supermarket for the fresh food grocer for the benefit of the residents. We'd like to utilize the in-kind expenditures and efforts that have already been happening so far on this endeavor. I mean, a lot of it's already been done. So if it's possible, let's just don't duplicate a lot of that. Let's just move forward. And we'd like to have a mechanism provided, if possible, to let us know, let the city residents know possibly quarterly how this is progressing. And we'd like to also offer our assistance if we need, if you need any on-the-boots-on-the-ground assistance. We'd like to offer the LEAF organization for that endeavor. So thank you very much for hearing us.
Thank you very much. I appreciate all that work. I've been part of the Old Town Steering Committee for over ten years, and we've worked on bringing just a variety of businesses, including a grocery store. I think we were all very saddened when Come and Go sold all their markets here, you know, the gas station where they used to be able to get fresh fruits and vegetables when it was part of King Supers. I think we were all very saddened when they sold that, what, maybe three years ago now, four years ago? I used to go there a couple times a week, grab a tomato, lettuce, you know, milk, whatever you needed, and that was really sad to see that that go out because that really fit a niche. And I was really kind of surprised they did that because they stated that that was the busiest one in the entire state of Colorado, even though it was one of the smallest ones. So it was very disappointing to see that happen. I think all of us have been aware since then. I know, I know when I got on council as elected as mayor, I said to Todd and Scott and everybody, we've got to keep this moving forward, so we have never quit. At times, we have backed off on incentives. We've offered places because of requests from the citizens that they didn't want to see that. And I said, "We've got to offer any incentive to this," and I think we, as a council up here, agree, and we know that this is a food desert and the health issues that come with it. That said, anything, even if ground broke tomorrow, you know, we wouldn't have one for a year. Not... But anyway, so what Todd and I have been working on for the past week is getting Karen Share to come with their mobile food pantry once a month, and we had to this end of town. And we're really, really this close to getting that date set, and we will need six to eight volunteers to help man that the day that they come. And they will be getting that, well, they will just open their doors. And then part of their process is going to be to try to get people who are still not aware of the Sunnyside Food Pantry in town down there. We know those are stopgap measures. We know everybody still wants a full-service grocery store. They can go in and shop. But, but I think that one is great because you can go in and shop there. You don't just drive in and hand in a box of food. You can go in and shop and pick out what you actually want. So I think you have, well, I was gonna say seven people up here. There's only six of us tonight, but I know Gordon is with us in spirit. I think you have seven people that totally agree that this is a need in this end of town, and it has been for a very long time. And, and I'm sure Todd has something he would like to say tonight, too, because he's, I think he's pretty passionate about this, too.
Absolutely. And I appreciate it. It's good to see everyone. I see everybody off and on, but it's good to see you. Susan, I thought that was very well spoke by everybody up here. And know that from our perspective, you've got, you've got our full efforts to see if we can make this happen, just to let, to let everybody, some of the council members I haven't spoke to, just let everyone know. Fran and I made a nice trip last Wednesday up to Mr. Legree's shop over in Poncha Springs. I learned a ton. I'm not a grocer, so it was nice. I think we both learned a ton, saw what a gentleman he is. He is coming back on the twenty-first. We're going to give him some tour of some locations. His business model has changed a little bit. He's not real interested in just an acre, which is what we have on eighty-five, eighty-seven. He wants about a minimum of three, which makes things much more challenging, but that doesn't mean we can't overcome that. So we're gonna show him, we think, four possible locations, and our total focus is down here on the south end. And in some of our eighty-five, eighty-seven, it's, the logistics are much harder, so we may get off of there a little bit. But I can tell you, and I know the council fully supports this, wherever we're able to find a location, because we are all dedicated to doing that. The day it opens, we will have a transit stop there as well to help with some accessibilities. Rosa and I have a discussion with the senior center this week on, on how we can boost up our support for any paratransit that's working through the senior center as well, which we will fully support as well. So I think those go hand in hand. Because a lot of folks, it doesn't matter, like the gentleman said, if it's two blocks away, they need help getting there. So we want to make sure we can do that as well. So we've had some good, some good discussions. I think we've got some hope. One of the things we, I asked Mr. Legree, and I won't go into the whole discussion, is I asked him, I said, "I want to make sure we emulate anything Poncha Springs and Buena Vista has done." And the key is, the city didn't do any type of financial incentives, but the, the, his investor partner lives in Salida, so it's very close. So I think Fran, some of the other folks we have, reach out to any of those commercial investors that you know that live in our community. Because we can help, and we can help on the logistics. We can try to make everything happen. But to have a successful grocer, a big key is to have that financial portion. Mr. Legree has got the grocer side covered. He knows how to do that worry wonderfully. So if we can find him a good partner, then we come in as the city and help them with logistics, make things as easy as possible like the mayor talked about. We will have our eyes open for any type of incentives that we can do, but we're limited to that. That's where Kimberly and her folks are experts on that. And it was nice to hear Mr. Legree stated right away. He appreciated Kimberly and her team's help in putting together the package that they had over here on eighty-five, eighty-seven because I've never seen that big of a package for a small business in my career. But we'll keep looking at how we can help anybody do that, and if we work together, let's get them down here. So I completely agree. We'll do anything we can for you. Okay? You good? Okay. Oh, the three that we're looking at. Yeah, we're talking to three, but in our world, you learn, and this is something we learn. Sometimes we'll have ten businesses come in, and hopefully it'll work out with one of those ten. those ten. So, we don't want to, we don't want to say, because we have three possibilities, we're there. So if you have any leads, anyone on council, anyone else, we'll reach out and facilitate and do anything we can. Okay? But it's good to see you again. Very well done. Well said. You bet.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it, because a lot of times, when it comes to trying to do projects in the city, if you think of it like a three-legged stool, sometimes to get something done, it takes the city, it takes the businesses, but it also takes the citizens. And if we're missing any of those legs on that stool, it's not going to be balanced, it's not going to work long-term. So I really, really appreciate you guys coming forward and being that kind of wobbly and missing leg that we have on that sometimes, and, and I really appreciate it. And, and we're fully aware of it, and I think probably just about all of us up here have talked to somebody about it, or, or a vendor, or somebody who wants to build a building, or invest, or different things, and, I don't know. I was even looking at the Aldi's website the other day, because everybody keeps saying Aldi's is so wonderful, and I was so sad to see they don't have Colorado on their list of places they're trying to go to. So, if you're trying to woo Aldi's, they're not coming, so. But anyways, so thank you very much. Anybody have anything else they wanted to say? And I'll open up to you guys, and I want to open up to council members, too, if they want to say anything. Does anybody else on council want to say anything? Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't see Councilmember Estes.
I just want to say, I really appreciate all the work you guys have done here. I grew up in this town. I grew up with Barney's, right across the street. I grew up with Mayfield, which is in Rangeview, because I live on Mount View also. And I want to give the gentleman my card, so if he needs anything for that couple. My mom was the first lady that lived on that street, so we want to take care of that neighborhood, and if there's anything I can do to help with them, I'd be honored to do that.
Before Councilmember Hinton, I want to make sure everybody's familiar with 211. Your neighbors across the street would be perfect for 211. If they call 211, they have a grant with United Way now, that they can deliver their grocery order, and so call 211 and find out about that. Karen Cher was telling me they're involved with it somehow. I'm not sure how the pieces go together, but call 211 and find out that information. And Councilmember Hinton.
I think this lady had something to say.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you very much. Come on down. Yes. If you could introduce yourself for the record, please.
Good evening. My name is Elena Salinas, and I am the owner of a Fresh Move Neighborhood Grocery Store. I started my grocery store two years ago because I lived in a food desert. I lived in eight zero nine one six, and it affected me, and affected my family, my neighbors, the lack of transportation. So I knew I had to do something about it. I went out and I got over a hundred surveys all by myself, a one-woman pop-up stand with my babies on my hip. And it was all the same. We needed a fresh grocery store that offered fresher food options. We want to know where our food's coming from. We want it accessible, affordable. And so, I started in two thousand and twenty, and I started this mobile grocery store. I hit seven different neighborhoods throughout the southeast of Colorado Springs. And then last year, I traveled down here to Security Whitefield, and we did a pumpkin patch for the community. It was the most amazing thing that we did. We got to see the kids come out. It was awesome. And so everything that I'm hearing tonight, I actually heard about this meeting just yesterday, and so I knew I had to be here, because we've been to Athens for two years, and we're looking for space right now. I'm working on grants with the city already, with Colorado Enterprise Fund. I've already, Pike's Peak United Way, WCLI, all that stuff, I've been a part of it. I'm also part of the Colorado Springs EDC chambers. And so, I've done a lot of work with this, and our next step is space. And so, I just wanted to come and introduce myself to people that I haven't been able to yet here, and as well as you here, and just let you guys know that I've already done a lot of the work. You know, talked about online program, we already set that up. We have delivery, we have special boxes for diabetes and patients on chemo, because we're thinking about certain, there's certain gaps. We have education. We have free workshops where we teach people how to use EBTs. And so I do this pretty much all on my own, and I really do have the support of the community. I have tons of support, but we haven't really had that chance to find the space. I only need two thousand square feet to do what I need to do and to bring what I need to bring. Another thing is, I don't want to take everyone's time, but we partnered with Colorado Farms and Small Businesses. I'm a woman-owned business, female-led team, and so all our food comes from Montrose all the way to Yuray. Bread, eggs, milk, we have it all. So I'm very proud of it, and I really just wanted to share that with you guys, that if you guys were interested, to please reach out to me, and I'm here to support Fountain all the way.
Todd's like getting ready to jump out of his seat. Okay, just get out, Todd.
Please pass you the business card.
Make sure we get your contact information.
Do you have a card you can give to Todd also?
Um, I didn't bring any cards. This is kind of a last-minute thing that I knew to show up. But, thank you guys for your time.
Thank you so much. And, yes. I got her first name, but not her last name. Did you get her last name? I didn't get your last name, Elena. What was her last name?
Mayor.
Elena Salinas.
Salinas, okay.
My store is a Fresh Move.
Fresh Move? Great. Thank you so much for coming down tonight. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Mayor, can I just say something really fast? For those of you who spoke at the podium tonight, there's a sign-in sheet in the back. If you could just write your name and your contact information, if you would like to share that with us. So I have that for correct spelling of your name for the records. Please, thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anybody else out in the audience? Okay, and I do have, oh, I saw Councilmember Duncan. I thought I had your light on there for a minute.
It was, but I don't.
Okay.
Good evening. I didn't plan to get up and speak, but I was inspired by all of this. I am Peggy McGee, and I am the coordinator for the Community Kitchen that happens on Fridays from four to six at the First United Methodist Church, right up here on eighty-five, eighty-seven. And we are, have been fortunate that sometimes with the perishable food at Sunnyside Market, they bring it over and it's available for people to take it at that dinnertime. We get bread. Sometimes we have potatoes and vegetables, sometimes we don't. We have some pastries. And we always want to make sure anybody who comes to our kitchen gets well-fed, and we most generally have surplus, so we are like pushing it out the door in takeout. And anybody, everybody is invited to come, see how we work, come and help us. We have specific, we have about twelve different groups that come and cook on a rotating basis, and so just to keep that going, I'm always looking for new blood.
Who's the best group?
That would be Matt Racine from the Police Department. He comes and cooks, and we say, what do you want us to do, Matt? And he says, I've got it, I've got it, I've got it. So now Ray says, no, you don't have it. What do you want me to do?
We shame him a lot.
Thank you so much. That's a great place to meet your neighbors, too, so thank you. All right.
And it's donations only. There's no cost, so if you have money and you want to contribute, fine.
All right, we'll try Councilmember Hinton. Thank you. And then I'll come do Councilmember Duncan.
Sure. Hey, I just want to thank those that have come tonight. This is what it's all about. I love the positive energy. We actually need more of this, so spread the word. When anybody has an issue or passionate about something, please come out to the meeting. We are a council member of seven. We don't know it all, and we don't know all the concerns unless we hear it from you. So I appreciate you coming out tonight, and well done, and so let's continue this effort, and we'll do everything we can in our power to make this come to fruition. Thank you.
Counsel.
I echo that, and I also want to say that, you know, I've worked with a lot of you that is in this room, and I went to Safeway a couple of days ago, thinking that I could go in there and get two items and walked out. And the line was around the corner and around another corner, and they had two people working there, and the other side of the self-checkout was closed. So it's time. And we hear you, and we're working with you.
Also, I don't know, a lot of you haven't been in council meetings, but every time we have a developer come in here with a major development, and they want to set around this much commercial property, we're always saying, we need you to bring a grocery store down here, a Sam's Club, a Costco, a pharmacy. We need you to bring it. We need you to try to set that land aside, because you're bringing urban developments to rural areas, and you need to lay, set aside that land and bring those with you. So we're trying also to put it in the ears of the developers from the get-go when they're coming here with their ideas, that, you know, putting five thousand, ten thousand houses out on Mark Shuffle and saying, our Safeway can still handle it, it doesn't cut it. So we're really, really trying to encourage it from the get-go. So, if you know, if you know anybody who's buying a house out there, tell them that they're looking at a house, tell them to ask the developer, where's the grocery store? So, yeah. So, pressure from lots of little areas. And do you guys fill out those surveys on the bottom of your receipts? Because I've had some of the retailers tell me, they really look at those, and they look at the zip codes where they come from. So if you're shopping, say, at Natural Grocers or Sprouts Way uptown, because that's the only place they are, fill out those things and say, we want one in eight oh eight one seven. So, and the more of those we can get out there, it all just, it all just adds up together. So, all right. Thank you. Anybody else? Thank you so much for coming in tonight. You're welcome to stay if you want. All right, thank you.
I had to attend the meeting without a big, maybe we could take it just a minute for our people to...
Did you want a photo?
Uh, yeah.
Okay. Come on down. Get the emblem in the background and... Yeah, if you could, just right down here in front. Yeah.
We have people right here.
Yeah. Oh, absolutely. That really gives Kimberly something to hand people. Anybody who wants a photo, come down real quick.
I will. I'll reach in. I mean, he says around here. Squeeze up, squeeze up, squeeze up. I'm absolutely telling you. I'm going to go. 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 I'm going to go.
Okay, we're going to go ahead and continue on with the meeting. Item four point two, Board Commission's Committee Appointments. We're going to appoint one regular member to the Planning Commission. Yay, we got a new recruitment. All right. Or is it a new victim? Which one is it? A new volunteer? I don't see Mr. Curl.
No, he wasn't able to make it to this meeting due to a prior commitment, which I said was okay, that he was unable to attend. Mr. Curl has submitted an application for membership to the Planning Commission as a regular member. He would be fulfilling a vacated term by Mr. Baum, which left for personal reasons in April of last year. So he would be fulfilling Mr. Baum's term, which is set to expire on March twelfth of two thousand and twenty-three. Since the remaining portion of this term is greater than six months, it would be considered a full term, but he would be eligible for reappointment after March of two thousand and twenty-three, should he be appointed, and if it was desired at that time. Staff does not make any recommendations on Planning Commission appointments, so it will be up to City Council whether or not they would like to appoint Mr. Christopher Curl to the Planning Commission as a regular member.
Great, thank you. I personally know Mr. Curl, and I think probably some other people up here are familiar with him. He's done a lot in the community, but go ahead. Councilmember Corey?
I had a question. He does have previous experience on the Planning Commission, correct?
That is correct. He did serve as an alternate member for two years.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, that's all I wanted.
Oh, okay.
He served previously, so he has experience.
Yeah. Yep. All right, thank you. All right, somebody else have any other questions or comments? Seeing none, what would the council like to do? Councilmember Estes?
I move to appoint Mr. Curl to the Planning Commission.
Councilmember Cory?
Second.
I'm sorry, I didn't see your light there. Councilmember Duncan? Oh, it's still on. Okay. Thank you. Okay. But we can take a third if we need to. All right, we have a motion and a second for confirming... Just lost his name. Chris Carl to Curl to Planning Commission. Please vote. Thank you.
Six, yes. Motion carried.
Thank you very much. And we're on item five, City Council Agenda Request. City Council shall use its time to request any items for future consideration. Let's start to my left here tonight. Councilmember Cory?
None at this time.
Okay. And Councilmember Hinton?
Nothing, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Estes?
Nothing this evening.
Councilmember Applegate?
Nothing new this evening.
And Councilmember Duncan?
I don't have any future requests.
Thank you. Okay. That takes us on to Public to Be Heard. Citizens may address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Council may not be able to provide an immediate answer, but will direct staff to follow up. Out of respect for the council and others in attendance, please limit your comments to three minutes or less. Do we have any cards? Do not have any cards tonight? Okay, is there anyone from the audience that would like to say anything? Yes, ma'am? And if you could state your name and if you're a Fountain resident for the record?
Sure. Yeah, my name's Shalee Shrefati, and Councilmember Duncan asked me to speak. I am the president of the Fountain Youth Council, and she wanted to have us update you guys on what we did last meeting. So, let's think. We got a lot of planning done despite previous communication issues, and we did discuss a lot about the Fountain Fall Festival regarding issues with youth. Speaking of that, the Fountain Youth Council will be attending your next meeting discussing issues facing youth in Fountain. And, yeah, I think, was that it? Awesome, that was it.
Great. Could you sign the sheet at the back as we, if we, when you're leaving?
Yes.
So we can get your spell of your name correctly?
Of course.
And then, Councilmember Duncan, are you signing up for a presentation time for the 15 minutes so they can have more than three minutes, hopefully?
Yes.
Great.
She just happened to be here today. And they are also, come back up and tell them that the Youth Council also wants to be a part of us being, finding a grocery store.
Yes.
You know, we want to identify what the youth are saying that they are considering a desert here in Fountain.
Yes, so food insecurity is something that does affect our youth, and I feel like with other people I've, adults I've spoken to, they haven't really recognized that. But that is something that does affect youth, and a lot of youth are really passionate about that because they are aware that this is a food desert and this is something affecting them and their families. So, yes, the Youth Council would love to be a part of that.
You know, I've always said, "The more, the merrier." There's been a handful of us carrying this for 10 years, and the more that come in and kind of help support us and keep pushing it along, the merrier, because when you only have half a dozen people trying to do a lot of stuff, it gets exhausting and you're just flat around of ideas sometimes. So the more people, the merrier, and come on in.
Awesome, thank you so much.
So, thank you very much for being here tonight. Is there anybody else from the audience? I'm sorry? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to the Consent Agenda, item number seven. All items listed under the Consent Agenda are considered to be routine and will be approved with one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member or citizen so requests, in which case the item may be removed from the Consent Agenda and considered separately at the discretion of the council. I would like to remove item C from the Consent Agenda if everybody else agrees with that. I'd just like a little bit more discussion about it, please. Does anybody else have anything else they would like to remove from the Consent Agenda? Okay, seeing none. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Cory?
Motion to approve items seven, A, B, and D for the Consent Agenda.
Okay, Councilmember Hinton?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the passage of the Consent Agenda items A, B, and D. Please vote.
Six, yes. Motion carried.
Thank you. Give me just a second. My mouth is so dry, I'm having trouble. Okay. Okay, we're on to item 8A. Second reading of Ordinance 1777, an ordinance establishing a new chapter, Chapter 44, within Title IX, Public Peace, Morals, and Welfare of the Fountain Municipal Code, restricting open fires and open burning in the city of Fountain. Mr. Johnson, looks like you're up tonight, huh?
Good evening, Council and Mayor. This is second reading. You've just got me tonight. Mr. Gates was not able to come, but no substantial changes have been made, and it should reflect, I think the mayor pointed out, misspelling typo for one of the words that's been fixed. But other than that, there's been no changes. And again, reminder, this is not changing. I know we've had a lot of moisture recently. This is not changing, adjusting the stages, but just adding a chapter that allows for really better enforcement.
Okay, so except for a non-substantive change?
Yeah.
I've been practicing. There's, I just couldn't say that word for some reason. We've been having practice lessons. And any discussion? Okay, seeing none, what would council like to do? Councilmember Hinton?
I move to approve second reading of Ordinance 1777.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Okay, and that is for Ordinance 1777. Please vote.
Six, yes. Motion carried.
All right, thank you. We're on to new business. Item 9A, Considerations of Items Removed From the Consent Agenda. And I had asked to have item 7C pulled. The reason I wanted to have this one pulled is it has to do with water and some pretty, we had made some pretty strict restrictions on what needed to be done before any of these houses were going to be allowed to close, and could you please explain why we're changing that?
Absolutely. So this is an amendment to an existing agreement that was already executed and signed between the city of Fountain and Challenger Homes. They are the builder of the Ventana South subdivision. So the agreement obligated Challenger Homes to construct two off-site water improvements in order to facilitate the construction of those homes. These improvements were needed to mitigate off-site impacts to the water system when there was a fire in the Ventana subdivision. In such instances, other areas of our system lost service and pressure in order to move water into the Ventana subdivision to combat those fires. And so Challenger was required to complete both of these pipes and these projects before they would be allowed to set meters and have homes ready for sale. They have completed the first of these projects as of the end of 2021. They have the easements and the design completed for the second project, but they are encountering significant material delays, as is the rest of the construction industry. So they have reached the point in their home building that they are now ready for homes to be closed on and sold, and all they need is the water services to be installed at those homes. Per the terms of the original agreement, that cannot be allowed until these improvements are completed. They have come to the city with their request. They have approximately 45 homes scheduled for closing in calendar year 2022. They anticipate they will have the materials to complete the second project before the end of the year, and so they have requested the city consider amending the agreement to permit them to have 45 homes allowed for water service while they wait for the materials to complete this project. So the Water Utility has gone and evaluated what 45 additional homes would do out here to the level of service. We have determined that there would be no negative impact to the public safety, that is to say, the fire flow available to protect these homes. There would be no impact or detriment in service to the existing customers in that area. So it is our opinion that 45 additional homes would not provide any detriment or negative impact to our system or to public safety. We are attempting to be good partners and neighbors to Challenger Homes on this. This does not in any way alleviate their obligations to complete these projects for the Water Utility. They will still have to complete them to our satisfaction and go through the standard acceptance process that we have laid out in the original agreement, but this will allow them to start selling homes whilst they are still progressing on this second pipeline that they need to complete for us.
Okay, so the developer's not getting away with anything?
Correct.
They're not getting special treatment? They're not?
This does not waive or change any of the conditions of the agreement. They will still provide all of the benefits they were obligated to give to the city or provide for the city. This is just giving them a little bit more time to complete those because they are facing impacts beyond their control, which we are seeing in many areas of construction as well.
And if we get to the end of those 45 homes and it's still not done, then?
No additional extensions. We've made it clear that this will only go to the end of calendar year 2022 and only for up to 45 additional homes. If at that point in time, they still do not have the materials for this pipe, they still have not completed the project, they cannot install another water service to a home until that project is complete. They will be stuck waiting, and that has been made clear, that is our line in the sand for them. This is a one-time concession to try to accommodate and facilitate them without impacting our residents and our system, but this is the only concession that will be made.
Okay. All right, does anybody else have any questions on that? Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah, this is for Carl. 45 taps are acceptable?
Yes, sir. Taylor runs the model, and when he ran the model loaded, we're still okay with that 45 on and the fire flow.
Terrific.
Public safety is our primary concern in this. At no point do we want to drop the available fire flow out of any hydrant below what is required by code, and we've assessed that this additional 45 homes will not lower anything below the code level.
And a quick question, maybe this is for Christie or Taylor. Do you guys know off the top of your heads how many total taps in Ventana South?
230 approximately.
Okay. And do we know the first phase, what they're planned for?
I believe they have 60 to 70 is what's in filing one, so this will not give them all of the homes they are currently working on. This number was arrived at based on their projected home sales through the end of calendar year 2022, since that is the drop dead date that we will give them this extension.
And that was part of the conversation and the thought behind this, was there's still significant motivation for them to install these improvements? Because even in the first phase, you know? And so this just allows people that have, and I think like Taylor was saying, that this still allows people that have contracted to buy a house in Fountain the ability to move in, and we didn't want to negatively impact them either. And so this was kind of a way of, kind of a win-win from everybody, and because at the end of the day, we really need that, those improvements done.
Absolutely.
And this is, this is a continued, I mean, the motivation and the incentive stays almost exactly the same, just allows people to move in in the meantime. So that was kind of the thinking.
And that's an important aspect to note, is that one of our primary goals in allowing this concession was that they had individuals already contracted to purchase and close on homes, and we did not want to negatively impact those individuals and delay their occupancy of a new home that they've contracted for, so long as it did not impact our other existing citizens and our ratepayers.
Yeah, because I've known people that the house isn't done on time, and they have to be out of their house, and then they have to rent back, and, you know, on and on, it can go three or four layers deep, so.
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Hinton?
Taylor, is this your first time speaking before council?
No, I've done it a handful of times this year.
Well, this is my first time hearing you. Thank you so much. Very professional. I appreciate all the, all the work that you're doing in this and the concession for Ventana. It's important to make sure that we cross the party aisles and make sure we're doing right by our residents, new residents that are moving in the fountain. So thank you so much, and your staff, and everything that you guys are doing.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Thank you. And, Kay, any further questions from anybody? Any questions from anybody in the audience? Okay, seeing none, what would council like to do? Councilmember Estes?
I can find the right one. I move to approve Resolution 22-031.
Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on the floor for Resolution 22-031. Please vote.
Six, yes. Motion carried.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And like, like Councilmember Hinton said, great explanation. Thank you. All right. Councilmember Estes, did you have something? Okay, thank you. All right, item 9B, Public Hearing. I'm opening a public hearing on Resolution 22-030, a request by Terra Nova Engineering, Inc., on behalf of FHSS Climate LLC to consider a conditional use to allow outside storage of vehicles for property located at 6910 Bentley Drive, Fountain, Colorado, herein after described as Exhibit A and Exhibit B. Ms. Serrano?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. Hopefully you guys are having a good evening. I'm glad the summer's here. Yay. So today I'll be presenting, the item before you tonight is the outside storage of vehicles for Phase 2 for Fountainhead Medical Campus self-storage. The property is located at 6910 Bentley Drive in the Property Zone Small Office Warehouse District. Next slide, sorry. I'm thinking I'm changing my slide here, but I'm not. Next slide, Jolanda, please. So the property is about 3.8 acres. The zoning district allows outside storage, however, a conditional use is required with the zoning district. There is also a requirement that the property, that the outside storage has to be screened from view. The building has been converted to interior storage units at this point. In 2020, a conditional use was approved by City Council to allow portable storages on this property. Now, the applicant is proposing to add four additional buildings to the property and also convert a carport to store vehicles, to store RVs and boats. The cover structure requires the outside storage, sorry, the cover structure requires the conditional use because it's considered outside storage per code. Next slide, please. A little bit of the property. The existing building is about 10,000 square feet. The structure, the carport that will be, that the applicant is proposing is about 15,000 square feet. For, for the outside storage to be screened from view, the applicant is proposing a privacy screen fabric that will be added to the existing chain link fence, and I'll show you in a little bit where that will be. It will be proposed on the west and the southern boundary of the property. Next slide, please. There is an existing access alone, there's an existing access point that's located on Bentley Drive. This property is not in the floodplain, so there's no floodplain issues. The property is surrounded by Plant Industrial and also I-25, so there's no, there's no neighbors, there's no residents around this outside storage use. Next slide, please. As you can see, it's really hard to see this plan, but the highlighted area is the new structure, the carport that is being proposed. The carport will be located directly east of I-25 and along the, along the west, the western and the southern portion of the property lines. That's where the chain link fence is located at this point, and they will be adding a privacy screen fabric to propose, to propose this screening from view. Also, there will be landscaping that's required per code that will be located along I-25 as well, inside the property line. Next slide, please. These are the elevations that the applicant has provided with their elevation plans. A site plan is in review for the additional four buildings that the applicant has provided that is proposing. The elevations are showing that it is a normal, standard carport that's being proposed. To the right, you can see the picture of the privacy screen fabric and how it would look like from I-25 and when you're going north on I-25 as well. The future land use for this property is Business Park and Plant Industrial. The property was rezoned in 2013, and the proposed use of outside storage is consistent with the comprehensive plan at this point. Next slide, please. Sorry, the slide wasn't showing what I was talking. Jolanda, can you please show the next slide? Thank you. Staff finds that the, that the request is consistent with the conditional use review criteria of code. Also, May 4, last month, on May 4, Planning Commission approved the outside storage application with the condition that the privacy, the privacy screen fabric will need to be installed to screen the outside storage from view, and staff does not oppose this, does not oppose for the approval of the condition, of the conditional use that the applicant has requested, but we are asking for the condition to be in place, that a privacy screen fabric should be installed on the west and the southern property boundary of the chain link fence that is existing. And that's all I have tonight.
Okay, just clarification. So the motion that you need made is to include the condition of the privacy fence, if that's what council wants to go?
Correct.
Wants to do. Okay. All right, thank you. Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anybody, any questions from anyone on council at this point? Okay, I don't see anybody from council. I'm being really careful. Anybody from the public that would like to say something? We do, if you could come up and state your name, and if you're a Fountain resident, please? Gabby on your right there. Give her just a second. Yep.
Hi, I'm Travis Semino. I live at 1815 River Drive in Fountain, so probably maybe even a quarter mile from this proposed site. I was just wondering, can we go back to the blueprints that show the street view? I think that's slide three, maybe? Something like that? There we go, right there. Yeah, that's good. So on the east side, it looks like there's some fences there facing, one, the Fountain Creek Trail that is on the other side of the creek there, right?
So this is on the west side of the street?
Okay.
They're not just extending down their facility that's already there? This is on the west side of the street where the kidney dialysis used to be?
Yeah, okay.
That's the building that they made self-storage on the inside?
Yeah, okay.
And then this is going to go the west and the south of that building?
Okay, yeah, I just needed some clarification, because, yeah, you guys are covering one corner and not the other one that faces the trail, and, yeah, so. Okay, cool.
Okay, so you're not concerned since it doesn't affect the trail?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right. Any other questions from anyone in the audience? Well, all I can say is covered RV and car storage, the guy's going to be sold out in a month, so.
We do have the applicant here, Mayor, if you want him to come up.
Please come up, yes.
Thank you.
It seems to be the thing to do this year for everybody to have shoulder surgery in 2022, so I hope you're recovering well.
Well, Gabby, thank you for volunteering me. My name is Matt Craddock. I'm with Craddock Commercial, and we're part of the project to be developed there. We were thrilled to have DeVita there for a time, but that, that use passed, and it's unfortunate that we weren't able to develop that into the medical campus we'd hoped. As such, a conversion, sorry, my Velcro's falling apart here. As such, we felt this was a great use, as we do on the self-storage across the way, to expand down there and offer climate controlled, and ultimately expand the climate control at there. The parking facility is probably a placeholder for some time, be that 10 to 15 years, to perhaps additionally build on the site to go vertical and more of a contemporary self-storage. But for now, it's just a perfect fit, and to your point, Madam Mayor, that there is such a strong demand for this type of product. And especially with the hail that we've had the last several years, it'll be a great way to at least mitigate some of that, should it occur again. I'm most excited about the office warehouse, our warehouse complex that's going to be built there. These are larger units fit for businesses, and there's a huge demand here, as well as Colorado Springs, to facilitate that. And so my hope is this incubates the small shops that are either growing out And so, my hope is this incubates the small shops that are either growing out of their homes and need additional space to continue their work, or to, you know, potentially create new business there at the site. So, we're happy to, happy to go through it. Gabby's been a wonderful planner. I love working with staff down here. There's always a give and take, but they're fair and they're, they're wonderful people, and, and I'll do it again.
Can you just repeat that part?
Yeah, there may be some developers that do not feel this manner, but I know, I, I love them. They're, they're great folks. Having gotten to know them casually, I've been standing up here and had the honor to do so since probably about 1998, when I brought my first project there, and was quite a younger man then, without the unusability of my shoulder at this point. But, anyway, Gabby did a wonderful job presenting. If you have any questions, I'm happy to answer those.
Okay, does anybody have any questions for Mr. Craddock?
Great. Thank you, guys. Much appreciated.
All right, thank you very much. All right, great presentation from everyone. It's always great to meet the business owners and have them come in. Thank you very much. And what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Applegate?
Yeah, I make a motion to approve Resolution 20030, subject to conditions of the screening that we were just told about.
Okay, okay. Councilmember Hinton?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second on the floor for Resolution 22-030. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
Six, yes, motion carried.
Troy, please correct me if I just made an error. Did I need to close the public hearing before we voted?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm glad I caught myself. Thank you.
Yeah, I didn't catch it either. Yeah, I think you can just retroactively close the public hearing.
Okay, I'm going to retroactively close the public hearing. Thank you very much. Okay, all righty. It's always good to make your mistakes in public. All right. All right, I'm opening a public hearing and first reading of Ordinance 1778, an ordinance amending the official zoning map of the City of Fountain from the Regional Commercial, RC District, to the multifamily MF District for properties sometimes known as Garrison by Watermark, generally located at the southeast corner of Mesa Ridge Parkway and Metropolitan Road, and herein after more specifically described in Exhibits A and B. And, oh, the correct person, Ms. Martinez. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening. Kristi Martinez with the City of Fountain Planning Department. Tonight, City Council will be considering a rezon request from the Regional Commercial Zone District to the Multifamily Zone District. Next slide for presentation. Nope, too far. Slide two. Other way. I apologize. Technical difficulties.
It's quite fine.
This one, thank you. So, the parcel being considered tonight is on the south side of Mesa Ridge Parkway. It is to the east of Syracuse, and then directly west behind the Black Bear Diner, Walgreens, and Advanced Auto up on Fountain Mesa. And as I previously mentioned, the parcel is currently zoned to the regional commercial. Next slide. A very similar request for the same parcel came before City Council in April of 2021. At that time, the applicants were requesting a rezon of 17.4 acres. The acreage that was previously rezoned, the 17 acres, is also included within this 21-acre request tonight. They have redesigned their site, which necessitated the need to rezon additional land. So, rather than come back before council with two or three separate rezones, it was opted to not move forward with the original rezon and just include it within the 21 acres being requested tonight. It is planned for a multifamily development of approximately 336 units, which will range from one-bedroom, two-bedroom, and three-bedrooms. This area has also been identified as an infill area by our economic development areas, a high need for development, and the multifamily zone district is a cohesive unit with the commercial, as they tend to be a smaller household, typically single or recently married. Sometimes they do have some young children with them, so the proximity to commercial land and commercial and retail end-users is critical for multifamily units. Next slide. To the north is vacant multifamily land, is on the north side of Mesa Ridge and directly east of Mesa Ridge High School. There's also vacant land to the south, and then commercial development to the east. That's already been built out, as I mentioned, Black Bear, Walgreens, Advanced Auto. Access to the site will come from Metropolitan Street. It is currently planned to extend from Mesa Ridge South down to Mesa Road. They will also have a secondary access to the east via Neuron Avenue, so for those who aren't sure where Neuron Avenue is, it is the roadway between Walgreens and Advanced Auto. It currently terminates at the western boundary. It is planned to go further west into the property, but it will be a gated access. We have consulted with Public Safety regarding any type of emergency services, because it is planned to be a gated community, that there will be Knox boxes. Knox boxes on both gates, at the front entrance along Metropolitan and along the eastern boundary for Neuron, so that if, after hours, if there's an emergency, emergency services can get into that property quickly. All notice requirements have been satisfied for the public hearing. The property was posted, a notice was published in the El Paso County Advertiser and News, and then all property owners within 400 feet were notified. Staff has not received any feedback based on any of those public notifications. Next slide. So, just to graphically represent this, to the top of the screen is Mesa Ridge Parkway with Mesa Ridge High School to the north. On the left side of the screen is Syracuse, and then to the bottom of the screen is Mesa. The roadway that you see traveling north-south is the planned Metropolitan extension, and then off to the right-hand side, on the east side of Metropolitan, is their planned lot for the multifamily development. That is the 21 acres being considered tonight for the rezon. Next slide. So, this is a zoomed-in version of the proposed concept plan for the multifamily. So, again, their primary access will be on the left-hand side from Metropolitan, with their emergency access in the lower right-hand corner from Neuron Avenue. There will be a multifamily development with the 336 units. They are planning a clubhouse with a private pool and other amenities for their residents. And then their detention pond facility is located in the southwest corner. Next slide. Legal requirements. We need to show the zoning exhibit that is proposed. As I mentioned, it's currently zoned to the regional commercial, and they're proposing the multifamily. Next slide. Were there questions on?
I got a quick look at it, and I didn't.
Oh, I apologize. Can you go back?
Yeah.
Which slide? The larger one?
Yeah, the zoomed in, yeah.
Two slides back.
Yeah, so, nope, nope.
That one. Or do you want the zoomed in?
The zoom-in one, yeah. So, as I'm looking, and maybe my eyes are wrong, is there, there's one way in and one way out, or is there another access way out of that community?
There are two ways in. So, Metropolitan, as I mentioned, is on the left-hand side, which will be constructed with this development from Mesa Ridge Parkway South to Mesa. Their primary access will be from Metropolitan, which is depicted on that darker shaded gray.
Yep.
And then there is a secondary access on the east side to Neuron Avenue, which is in the lower right-hand corner.
Got it. I see it. Yep. It is. Thank you so much.
No problem. Next slide. The Fountain Comprehensive Future Land Use Plan does recommend multifamily. The rezon request is substantially requested with the Future Land Use Plan of the Comprehensive Development Plan. Next slide. Staff has reviewed the rezon request with the Fountain Municipal Code and has found that the review criteria number one and two in Section 172450 are consistent. This item was presented to the Planning Commission at their May meeting, at which time they made a favorable recommendation by four to zero. At this time, staff would not oppose the approval of Ordinance 1778 on first reading to rezon a portion of the Regional Commercial Zone District to the Multifamily Zone District. Are there any questions for staff?
Okay, I'm not seeing any council members.
The applicant is here, Ms. Jessica Tuttle with Watermark.
Great, thank you.
With Watermark is here.
Come on up, and then we'll give the audience a chance to ask any questions if they have them.
Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Jessica Tuttle. I'm VP of Development for Watermark Thompson Thrift Residential. We just had a name change, so thanks, Kristi. But, great to be here tonight. I was here last year, as Kristi mentioned. It was actually on a Teams call. I didn't get to see the sense of community. It was really fantastic. I spend many late nights in other council chambers, and I really don't see this in other places, so great job, city manager, police, council. You have something special. I do have a really brief presentation. If you don't mind, I'll show you. So, like Kristi mentioned, we really are just revising our zoning boundary. We've been working with our seller on all of our master infrastructure, all of the roadways, all of the detention, and by the time our engineers designed that detention, it changed the limits of our site. So, we're coming back to change the limits of that multifamily zoning.
Great.
Okay, next slide. Maybe, thank you. Okay, a little bit about our work, next slide. Just one thing to note, we, you know, we scrubbed really the state. We've done 63 projects since our first closing in, in 2010. 12 have been in Denver. What we look for, good retail, close to major thoroughfares, and good education, and so this site meets all of that. There's also not a ton of apartments here. There's only one comp. It's Mesa Ridge Apartments. If we go up to Colorado Springs, we'd have easily 10 other projects right on top of us, and that still works for the demand. There's still people that need that housing. I think here in Fountain, you'll have Fort Carson, and then when you talk about grocers or retail or medical, I saw that in your strategic plan, those employers ask, where will our employees live? And then that density in our residents will also just push you over that brink of, okay, now we really have enough people for more retail and for more grocers. So, we'd love to be a part of the community here and bring more residents to Fountain. Next slide. Just some quick examples. Here's products we've built in the past. By the time we design and build, these are actually three, four, or five years old, so I get excited about what we're designing now, specific for Fountain. Keep flipping. Next slide. Next slide, resort amenities, pool. Everyone likes that. It's convenient, no maintenance. If they travel, if they're professionals, they like the community here. Next slide. Large open interiors, stainless steel appliances, quartz and granite. It'll really be top of the market when we deliver here in Fountain. Next slide. Frame mirrors, tiled showers. Keep flipping. Next slide. Community features, like I mentioned, we have fire pits, grill stations, really try to have a sense of community and design that community specific to the location. Next slide. Clubhouse, keep going. We'll have community events here at the clubhouse and outdoor areas. Next slide. Fitness, keep going. Keep going. So, like I said, we've, we've developed in 63 locations. We, we have a track record. Every project, we've really honed in what, what do our residents want? And also, what sites really work for this product? And this site works being next to retail, being at the front entrance of Fountain. We're really excited. And it also allows us to, to really master plan that entire 100 acres our seller owns. We'll bring water, sewer, road infrastructure for future development around us. Next slide. Next slide. So, this was the history Kristi talked about. Here was the multifamily zoning boundary that was approved last year, and what we're talking about today is really just adding in the detention pond there at the southwest corner, and here's the new boundary in green. So, very excited to join Fountain and be part of this community. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you so much for coming down in person tonight. It really, really helps when we can connect faces and see what, you know, your vision of the property is. And you said it might not be like this, but look forward to seeing what the final plans are going to be. So, are there any questions from any council members? Okay, is there any questions from anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing none, I'm going to close the public hearing. And what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Estes?
Move to approve Ordinance Number 1778 on first reading.
Councilmember Hinton?
I second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second on Ordinance 1778. Is there any further discussion? Okay, seeing none, please vote.
Six, yes, motion carried.
Okay, thank you. We're going to move on.
Mayor, one thing, if I could add, just one thing before we move on to the next item. We'd just like to thank Ms. Tuttle for coming down, giving that great presentation, and she touched on a very key for that whole piece, that lucardi piece, as we call that, is this will truly be the groundbreaking for it, and we've already heard from others that are interested to follow that groundbreaking, so it's been many years coming in the city, and we sure appreciate you all being at the forefront. Your bet?
Okay, thank you. Moving on to item 9D, Resolution 22-032, a resolution of the City, Resolution of the City Council of the City of Fountain, Colorado, authorizing the ordering of 30 enterprise, I had to read that, I had to look at that for a second, 30, enterprise leased vehicles, two transit buses, and one tandem dump truck prior to the normal budget approval timeline. Mr. McDonald?
Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and everyone that attended today. Reason for this, again, is to approve the early ordering of the 30 enterprise vehicles and two transit buses and one tandem truck, and I've got a presentation, a quick presentation. I wanted to go into a little bit of the history of why we're doing this, and especially for the newer City Council members on where we were and where we started with the lease program with the city. So, next slide. So, this really started in about 2018, late 17, late 18, and we identified the city, we identified some needs of the city, and we identified that a large portion of the fleet, the current fleet back then, 18, over 81% of the fleet was over 10 years old. We identified that as an issue. We also looked at reducing operating costs and trying to downsize the fleet when we went to this enterprise lease program. And then we looked at long, we wanted to look at long-term sustainability and to establish and figure out where cost savings could be looked at. So, when we looked at all of this, we identified especially the high operating cost per vehicle on some of these older vehicles. 2018, our average operating cost per vehicle were about $54 a month per vehicle. With the new lease program that we established, we're looking at about a $6 per month operating cost, so we substantially decreased the operating cost fleet-wide. Another thing that we looked at that changed a lot of this in 2017, 2018, was the hailstorm. So, our initial goals back then were to phase this enterprise lease program in place. 2017, 18 was some extraordinary weather that we encountered, and we ended up losing a large percentage of our fleet that was totaled because of that hailstorm. So, that accelerated our ordering needs into replacing the vehicles that were totaled during those hail events. We had two or three back-to-back then that pretty much destroyed a lot of our fleet. So, instead of phasing a lot of these leased vehicles in as we wanted to, our initial order in 2000, late 2017, 18, was for about 44 vehicles. And that, that was something that was, of course, needed back then, but it, it presented some issues long-term when we look at turning these vehicles back in. Last year, I came before City Council and requested the turn-in, the early turn-in of about 30 of those, 20, I think it was about 20 vehicles back then, to try to get them in early and take advantage of a few things. One of the things we were trying to take advantage of was the high resale value of used vehicles that we are still encountering right now. We were in a position last year where, based on turn-in and based on resale values of used vehicles, we could actually replace those vehicles and lower our costs, an average of $100 to $200 per month per vehicle citywide. So, we were hoping to see almost a $20,000 a year savings by replacing some of these vehicles. Next, next slide, please. So, in 2018, like I said, we ordered 44 vehicles. 2019, based on trying to continue that phasing, we ordered 15 additional vehicles. In 2021, as I just stated, we tried to order 21 vehicles to help offset what we knew was going to happen in '22. '23, based on a five-year lease program, we knew in 2023, a large percentage of these vehicles were going to come due for turn-in. We're either going to have to buy them out, or we're going to have to turn them in and replace them. And based on our objectives, we were, a lot of those, we wanted to try to replace them so we could continue that, especially if we could have cost savings, turning vehicles in and replacing with new vehicles, saving the city money on, on those monthly lease purchases. Unfortunately, again, in '21, when I requested for those 21 vehicles to be ordered, and we did order those about a day after I asked that, we found out later that year. later that year, after about twenty-one being ordered, they canceled the large majority of those orders. And that was just based on the things that were happening those years with COVID, availability of product, availability of software, microchips, and everything that we are still encountering, uh, today when we try to order vehicles. Uh, so out of the twenty-one that we ordered, uh, we're hoping this year we will see a completion of about twelve of those orders out of the twenty-one. So, that sets us back a little bit further with now we need to order more vehicles, uh, in, in two thousand twenty-two to have, be delivered in two thousand twenty-three to replace the ones we need. Another thing that we're really looking at, uh, when we look at the, look at the needs of the fleet, look at the needs of the city in regards to the fleet that we currently maintain, when we reduced our fleet size by about thirty-four, thirty-four vehicles in two thousand eighteen, which was again, a large cost savings for the city, uh, we also wanted to make sure that we kept looking at, do we need all these vehicles? Do we need to change vehicles? What do we really need in the city right now for what we're doing? So, as we go outside, uh, right now, we've identified about six of those vehicles that we leased, uh, in two thousand eighteen that we will probably request buyout. The vehicles are being utilized, uh, but they are mostly very low-mileage vehicles. So, we don't see the need or the cost savings for the city to turn those back in and get new vehicles, uh, that we're only gonna put a few thousand miles on a year right now. And as we go forward, we're gonna continue to make sure that, do these departments that have these vehicles really need the vehicles? Or can they combine these vehicles and, again, reduce our fleet as much as possible? So, we'll continue to monitor that. Next slide, please. Another thing that has changed industry-wide is the ordering requirements, especially back when we, when we started the lease program with the city and with most other heavy vehicles, uh, when I looked at ordering dump trucks, when I looked at order having equipment, usually we had until November timeframe. When city council approved the final budget for those two-year budget cycles, the budget cycle was approved, I could go, I could go back and order those vehicles and we could get them delivered the next year. That has changed. Uh, as years go by, I'm continually getting, uh, requests to get these vehicles in order. And it's not really a quest anymore, it's a mandate. Uh, the way it sits right now is these vehicles, if they are not ordered by about June timeframe, they cut the orders off. So, what has changed drastically is not only can we not reduce our chances of getting vehicles, we reduce and we lose the ability to even order vehicles. Uh, the major manufacturers, either GM, Ford, Chrysler, uh, after about two weeks, their order banks fill up based on the availability of product, uh, hardware, uh, components for these vehicles. Same with the heavy vehicles, the Mack trucks and the other tandem vehicles that we have to provide service with the city with. And we lose the ability to get those vehicles the next year. So, it puts us two years out. Uh, with that being said, um, based on what we're looking at right now, uh, again, we're looking at basically replacing a lot of the lease vehicles that we're gonna have to turn in next year. And right now, we've identified thirty. Uh, and again, one thing that I have, uh, discussed with, with all these manufacturers, and they all are on board with that, and I have, I have written documentation to state that, is that even though we order thirty vehicles, as we go through this ordering process and this audit process on a continual, continual basis, if next year, if we order these vehicles now and say next year, we identify instead of, instead of replacing thirty, we may only wanna replace twenty or twenty-five, uh, they have no problem reducing that order because they have plenty of other people that are willing to purchase those vehicles. So, there is no shortage of demand for the vehicles right now. They estimate this type of an ordering process to at least go on through two thousand twenty-five before they start seeing relief in their parts, uh, shortages and vehicle shortages. Uh, same thing with the two transit buses. We have two transit buses identified that are miled out. They're over a hundred fifty thousand miles, so they are up for replacement. We are in the same situation with them where if we don't get those orders in now, we will not see those buses next year. Uh, same thing with the one truck, one tandem dump truck. Uh, we have two coming in this year, hopefully, with the one that we want to put on the budget for next year that will basically get rid of the oldest trucks that we have in the fleet for streets department, uh, and it'll update the, update the fleet and give us availability. We have several trucks sitting in the yard right now that we basically can't operate, uh, because there's no parts available for them. Uh, and even part shortages, the vehicles are so old. Uh, we're in the process now of, if we want to try to get these vehicles back up and running, especially to, to, to do everything they need to do, we have one sitting in there. We can't get a, what they call a ram for the dump portion of the dump truck, 'cause the vehicle's so old, they don't make it anymore. So, we'd have to custom fabricate and, and move a lot of that things on that vehicle to try to make it operate, which just isn't worth what the cost of the vehicle and the value of the vehicle is. So, that is kind of a background on where we got, where we are today. Uh, and then based on that, uh, that's why I'm requesting the early ordering so we can get these vehicles ordered. Uh, we can make adjustments down the road as need be, but if I don't get them ordered here in the next couple of weeks, we won't see them next year at all. It will be another two years out. In the future, what we're looking at is based on the current environment and basic order, the order requirements that we have. What I would, will be doing in the future is during our second year, our second year of the budget cycle, you'll be seeing me coming to you to look for early ordering again, uh, and get funding for that next year so that we can keep doing this and keep moving on, as long as this continues the way we are now. Any questions?
Different way of doing business.
It's a, it's a new world out there. Yeah, especially with, uh, with what we have now. We're continually, a lot of, even the orders that we looked at now, some of the Chevy Traverses that we tried to, uh, get ordered, uh, and get reserved for us based on this lease program, uh, we said we wanted six or seven. They already came back and the orders are shut off already. So, we're already too late for those. So, we're trying to replace them now with Chevy Blazers to try to do the same thing. We have some, some of the departments that are, we're gonna be changing the vehicles out on, some of them during the initial lease program, they have standard bed pickup trucks. Like, I, our IT services is one department. Standard bed pickup trucks don't work for IT services. They need something like a Chevy Blazer. They can put their, their, uh, equipment in the back of it and trans, transport it throughout the city as needed. Uh, and those, those computers don't do well bouncing around the back of a pickup truck. So, we'll be changing some of those vehicles around.
Counselmember Duncan?
I just wanna say, I appreciate your forward thinking. You know, I would not wanna have your job with, uh, all the shortages of, uh, any types of equipment that you're needing. Uh, you know, everywhere you go, there's a shortage in, in this, and there's a shortage in that. And so, I really appreciate the forward thinking.
Thank you.
Counselmember Hinton?
When I read this, I said thirty. My, my head just exploded. I was like, whoa. So, as I was reading deep into it, I just, like, uh, Councilmember Duncan said, you know, we appreciate ya thinking ahead, um, trying to get ahead and be proactive. It's always easier to be proactive than to be in the reactive mode. I think we're kind of doing both right now. Uh, but you're, you're doing your very best to, to make sure that we're, we're looking good in the future, so I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Um, Chief Heber, is this gonna affect our police vehicles too?
Yeah, we're gonna be, we're gonna be in the same boat, Madam Mayor. Uh, we're in the same constraints that Bob is in, as I briefed a couple of city councils before. We had to wait two years to get some vehicles, a year to get some vehicles that just got in. So, in order to take advantage of the deadline, I'll probably be coming back to you and asking for permission to go ahead and stock some in for next year, or else we won't be to order, uh, anything out there. So, we're trying to get healthy as best we can.
Thank you. So, any other questions from council? So, any questions from anyone in the audience? Okay, seeing none, what would council like to do with this? Councilmember Hinton?
I move to approve resolution twenty-two dash zero three-two.
And, um, I don't have the screen up here, Joni, so I don't know who, um, got in second, whether it was Councilmember Dunson or Applegate, so.
I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
I didn't, I don't have the screen up here, so I can't see when people are, um... Okay, that's okay. Councilmember Duncan?
I second.
All right. We have a motion in a second. I'm just trying to keep people in the right order, they're coming in here. For resolution twenty-two dash zero three-two, um, it's seeing any, no further discussion, please vote.
Hold on, it says we're on three, four, right now.
Did I say the wrong thing?
No, you didn't say the wrong thing. It just says we're on resolution twenty-two zero three-four. We're voting on the wrong resolution.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize, let me go back.
Oh, on the screen? Okay, I thought I had read it wrong. Okay. Okay, it's on resolution E on our screens. On the voting screen, it should be D, not E.
Do you see D now?
No, can we just do an or a verbal vote, please?
Yes. You may. I don't know how to fix that, I'm sorry.
That's okay, we'll just keep moving forward. That's okay.
Mayor Thompson, how do you vote?
Yes.
Mayor Protem, how do you vote?
Yes.
Uh, Councilmember Hinton, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Corey, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Applegate, how do you vote?
Yes.
Councilmember Duncan, how do you vote?
Yes.
I have six yes, motion carried.
All right, thank you for catching that, appreciate it. There's a lot of, I was just waiting for the screen to come back over here to tell me who's clicking in. Yes, good catch, that's right, good catch. Yeah. Okay, now we're on resolution E, number twenty-two dash zero three-four, resolution amending the appropriation of fiscal year two thousand twenty-two budget funds. Todd Evans?
Yes, Mayor Council, good evening. Um, you know, this was one of those situations that we had that, actually, we get asked questions sometimes of, if we have a natural disaster, an emergency, how would some finance things be communicated and be handled? And this was a situation that relates to our snowstorm of May twentieth through twenty-second. And where that was at one of those natural events where we had, thankfully, people in real trouble, this was something to help us work through the process of how we would do it. If we were in the middle of a flood, um, something else like that, it would be handled probably close to the same way, it would just handled much faster. We would get ahold of you within fifteen minutes and kind of fill you in on the situation and move forward as I attempted to do on this one. So, this one relates to, again, the snowstorm that occurred, um, on the twentieth through the twenty-second. We were neat, we needed the moisture, so we're all very appreciative of that. We didn't like the nuisance damage that came along with that, which included, uh, quite a bit of damage, especially to the old portion of Fountain, where we have the old elm trees and those type of things. I, as I traveled the city, some of our newer, you couldn't hardly tell that it was hit once it, once it, um, melted, but they don't have the extensive kind of old, uh, trees and shrubs and things that we have in the older portion of the city. So, this one caused pretty extensive damage. And we felt it was, it was important and it was a need for the citizens to give them the ability, a location, to be able to take that slash two. And one thing we find, and we still currently see it around the city right now, Bob's guys are slowly working on it, they can in the right-of-way. Um, but as they tried to hit it the first few days and took care of it, now folks are pulling more out and dealing with it. So, God bless you. If we hadn't have done this over at Metcalf Park, um, Bob can tell you it ends up in different areas of the city. So, we attempted as quickly as we could after that storm to put together a drop-off location for that, um, uh, the limbs and the different things that were damaged. Um, I think we were all surprised at the, um, popularity of it in the city, or we didn't predict how big that would become. Um, Rosa and I, as we were out there on day one, started to figure out, oh, this is, this is a little bit different of an animal. And we did check, uh, Fountain residency, uh, there at the site, so we had to staff the site, which comes at a cost. I did have several myself tell me they appreciated that we were checking Fountain residency as they knew eventually it would fall on our budget to take care of that. So, we, of course, we staffed that, uh, twelve hours a day for just about over two weeks, a little bit over two weeks, I think it was, Bob. Um, and we appreciate those, uh, city employees that volunteered to come out and do that. Um, but what we ended up with was a very, very large pile. I've sent you out some pictures. Um, we took one for effect with Rosa standing next to it, and I can't make fun of her, so she's not here anymore. Um, but it was a huge pile, ten, twelve, fifteen feet high at some locations, and we think it covered about thirty, forty yards, um, of total sp- space on there. So, I had three different experts, if we call Carl an expert. Um, and we had Carl, Bob, as well as Jim Watson, take a look at it, and they predicted it would take a minimum of probably two months using the two tr- uh, city-owned, uh, chippers, grinders. So, at one point, we attempted to have them come out, and Carl had some staff out, Bob. They attempted to do that for a full day. Um, I was put on notice by Carl that we would probably be built, or, or buying the utilities a new grinder after that day, as well as Bob, the same for our parks. We didn't make much of a dent in it whatsoever, and we knew we had to shift gears. So, we started researching, and what we needed was a, a huge commercial tub grinder, as they call that. So, we started researching, Bob did that, uh, we got ahold of some companies out of Denver. Um, one of them that, that, uh, we spoke to and I spoke to said that we were the fifth municipality to get ahold of them, so we would be number five in line. We wouldn't get it for at least a month, and the cost of that was gonna be over forty thousand dollars. So, it's something that you don't go out and purchase, 'cause these are between three and four hundred thousand dollars to purchase these things. Um, they're, excuse me, I'm not an expert either. Bob said there are a million dollars, uh, to purchase those. So, they can, they can charge what they can get, uh, on these, especially after that type of a statewide disaster. So, we did some more research, and Bob did a great job with that. He found a company out of Pueblo that had one available, that had done business with, I think it was Pueblo County in the past. Um, so, we were able to, to, uh, do a little research on the company. Um, we quickly put together, uh, what we felt was a fair price. Um, they were available, they couldn't get out for about five days, um, but they did stick with their timeline, which we were approved. I notified you all, kinda let you know of what the plan was. Everyone understood the emergent conditions that we were in, as we've, we've had a couple of arson fires around the city. Um, you've seen some of those in your, your weekly updates. And a pile like that in, um, dangerous conditions that we went back into, and what we were pretty shocked at, we had the FD go by a couple of times, and it just takes one day for that to turn into basically dry timber. Um, so, we attempted, uh, the PD helped us out with directed patrols and kept those out there, but we really made it, made it a priority, and we got them out there urgently. Um, their cost was nearly half of what, what we found from the Denver companies, which, uh, their agreement was twenty-two thousand three hundred. Um, but that also included them removing the mulch, um, which was big. This was mulch that wasn't considered to be quality mulch. It was actually, you could offer it, but you don't want people to take this. Uh, the quality was so low and it included a lot of elm trees. So, poor folks would put it in their yards, not expecting they'd have elm trees coming up, uh, next year. So, it wasn't something that, that we thought we should put out there, because it wasn't healthy, as the experts said, for the folks that would use it. So, ultimately, at the end of the day, if you include the cost of the, the tub grinder, the removing of the mulch, as well as staffing the location, again, we staffed it twelve hours a day. To give you an idea of why we staffed it, it had been closed on the Friday, uh, following the week of the storm. The next Thursday, I went and checked with our folks, and we tried to touch base with them a couple of times a day out there. Um, and they had turned away forty-one loads, almost a week after we had, we had closed it. So, folks are still out there looking. Um, so, to pay the staffing that we had to do, as well as the agreement, uh, with Pueblo Woods, uh, products, is, were, our request is not to exceed twenty-seven thousand dollars to cover these requests. So, this is an appropriation of the budget itself request. If necessary, we don't think it will be, but if necessary, um, we'd like permission to, uh, take this from reserve funds if we need to. But when we do an appropriation, typically, if the revenues are good, we have the ability just to make this type of adjustment and continue to move forward with, uh, the budget, um, as approved with this. So, our request tonight is to pay for, uh, the full expenditures of that at a total of not to exceed twenty-seven thousand dollars. And I'd love to answer any questions.
How many other cities did this for their citizens that you're aware of?
You know, in this region, I'm not aware of any. I don't believe, I know, well, we know Colorado Springs didn't. I don't believe the county did anything, aware of anything, other than, who did? Manitou did. Yes, so they did it. But I'm not aware of anything else, at least along the front range. Now, once you get up into Denver, several of our, of the municipalities, um, our sizes are a little bit bigger. We had about four or five up there.
So, so we did it because we just thought it was the right thing to do to help people clean up their yards in there, in the city.
Absolutely.
So thank you so much for all the staff time that went into this. I, I know ninety percent of the people that came there were very polite. For the ten percent that weren't, that's the way it goes.
It's the way of the world now, sadly.
But thank you so much, and I appreciate it. And I appreciate the PD and, and Fire Department coming out and volunteering their time picking up the parks. We had, I know Penny Chirmino and some other people came out that day and helped pick up things so we could transport it around a little bit easier. If your branches, if you've drug them out to the street now and they're dry and dead, we're not coming by and picking them up, right?
No, and that's typical. Anything between the sidewalk and the, the right-of-way or the curb and gutter, the homeowner should be taking care of that. So you're seeing folks do that. So we're, we're out, we've still got some locations, as I said, Bob's. Folks, even though he's down fifty percent of his staffing right now, we're trying to fill those spots. They're hitting it. We've, we've talked about putting them on a little overtime to try to get the right-of-ways cleaned up sooner than later, but they're so tired from their, their work during the week, you don't have a whole lot of takers on the weekends to, to do that right now. So they'll get to them, they'll get to the true right-of-way, but we still ask the citizens to take care of between their home all the way out to that curb and gutter.
Okay. Thank you, everybody. I really, really appreciate the help, so thank you. Are there any questions from anybody on council? Mr. Hinton?
Sure. Appreciate it, Todd and the staff, Bob, all that you do. When you called me asking for that, I said, let me go just physically go down there and check. And when I went down there, I was amazed. I was like, there's a lot, because you can't see it from the street.
Right.
And I was like, my goodness, that, that's, that's a little crazy.
That was early on.
Yeah, that was early on, yeah. And so I appreciate all, all your staff and what you guys have done and the hours to put in there to, to make sure that we didn't get it more than what it really was. So thank you guys for all that you do.
Appreciate that.
Councilmember Applegate?
You know, what, what did we advise the people to do that got turned away? I mean, was there any, was there any alternative for them?
Yeah, we sent them down, and, and Bob's staff started putting out immediate to social media that the options were, if you were a Fountain resident, you had the option to bring it down to Metcalf. If you were not a Fountain resident, Fountain Valley, you could take it down to Rocky Top on Las Vegas. And I had a lot of folks that came down that were part of that ten percent that were angry. And when I offered that option of them to go down to Rocky Top, they didn't want to wait in the line because that was kind of Colorado Springs option, so there were huge lines. And I said, you know, you gotta meet us halfway. So they did have other options of taking it down there for five dollars a load and dropping it off at Rocky Top on Las Vegas.
There's a whole bunch of them on Ohio down just south of the street, close to the end.
Oh, yeah.
That's, whoever lives there is county. They just threw them out in the right-of-way.
Yeah. We, we may take care of that, and we may not. I don't want to commit to that.
You probably have to.
We always do the right thing. Yeah, yeah.
Part of homeownership.
Correct.
Stuff happens, and you have to take care of it. So, yeah. All righty. Councilmember Duncan?
I just want to say I appreciate the staff, you know, thinking quickly and getting that out, because the only requirement was that you provide that you who are a Fountain resident. And so other places charged. And so, you know, I think having the times that we're dealing in and having to say, well, do I get rid of my trees or do I pay for gas?
You bet.
You know, so I really appreciate that Fountain, as the lady said, we have a sense of community here, and I really appreciate that you being able to do that. And we had a lot of council members and council member kids out there helping also.
You bet.
So we had a lot of community help.
You bet. Thank you.
Councilmember Estes?
I just want to give a big shout out to Chris and the PD and the FD. You guys made my neighbors cry. They were veterans, and their volunteers came and helped them clean up their yard. They have a bunch of trees, and it was phenomenal. And it was just, it really made a sense of community, filling the Love Bank. So greatly appreciated.
Well, you got something good tonight, right?
Yeah, and now I just need that approval of the appropriation for the budget. It worked.
I'm postponing it. I'm postponing it as long as I can, keeping those pennies in the bank, getting a little bit more interest. Yeah. Okay. All right, thank you for, and, and, audience, anybody? Okay. All righty. Councilmember Duncan?
I move to approve Resolution twenty-two dash zero three four.
Councilmember Estes?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second on Resolution twenty-two dash zero three four. If there's no further discussion, please vote. And I don't think we can vote it. I think it's blacked out, so.
Okay, that's what I was going to say. Can you see the vote? Let me, this is new, so give me one second. I'm just trying this. Let's see what happens. Does it reset?
I think it did, yes.
Six yes. Motion carried.
All right. Thank you very much. All righty. Takes us on to item ten, Correspondence Comments and Ex officio Reports. Okay. Troy?
The only thing I have is to request an executive session.
Okay. That's enough. That's enough. So much for the Love Bank. Okay. Carl? Chris?
No, thank you. Just a lot of good community support and events, as was recognized tonight, and good to be a small part of it. Thank you. That's it.
Bob? John Trilch?
Yes, good evening, Mayor and Council. Just a couple of things. First, I'm pleased to announce that we have the printed copies of the strategic plans available. Yep, great. I gave you each stack there. You can carry around and hand out to neighbors and citizens as you need them. We have a lot available. They're here throughout City Hall, and if anyone requests them, just reach out to me. I'll give you a stack so we can get, get those out there. I wanted to provide a, just a brief update on where we're at with the two ballot question surveys. The public safety survey closed. It was very successful. We had eight hundred and fifty-three completed surveys, which is really, really a great response. Our initial goal was three hundred. The gold standard is kind of try to get five hundred, but three hundred was what we needed statistically, eight hundred and fifty-three. So really strong response on that survey. We released the street funding voter survey on Friday, last Friday, and right before tonight's meeting, the update was that we had two hundred and eighty-eight surveys completed.
Great.
So still a good response, not as strong as the first one, but it's still going to be out there through next Tuesday, the twenty-first, and we're continuing to encourage the, the community to provide us some feedback on that particular ballot question. So Magellan Strategies, who we're working with on these surveys, will be coming to council on the twenty-eighth, our next council meeting, and they will be providing a full outbrief on the results of both of those surveys for council and the public's consideration. And if there's any other questions about either of those, I'm available. And subject to anyone's questions, that's all I have this evening, Mayor.
Councilmember Hinton?
Yeah, just a quick question. So I know my wife's getting those texts. Is it on the city, city page too as well?
Correct.
That they can go into the survey?
Yes. So if you go to the city's website, it's right at the very top. It says, take the survey. You can click that, it'll launch you right to the survey. And then they have sent out over nine thousand text messages last week, and I believe this afternoon, they sent out another nine thousand text messages as a reminder. And they were going to begin the phone surveys this afternoon with the goal of completing fifty validated phone surveys.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And on the twenty-eighth, when they come, on the, looking at the timeline for how we need to get things onto the ballot, we will need to really make a decision that night about putting one or any or none, or where, I don't, where are we on that timeline now, Troy?
So we won't need to make a decision that night, but relatively soon after. So the early meeting in July is kind of when we need to. Yeah, that we have to declare participation in the election. And so we don't actually have to vote to approve the language on a ballot initiative or not, but we have to know whether or not we're, if we're participating in the election. So we're going to have, at least have to have some idea by that, really that first meeting in July.
And that was our idea, Mayor, was to have Magellan Strategies quickly present the results of the survey to give time for council and the public to have more dialogue and consider the, the results before you have to make a decision about whether to move forward and participate in the election.
Right. I just, yeah, just want to make sure where we are in the timeline, staying on it and keeping our eye on it, because you don't want to miss it by a day.
Right now, we're in good shape.
Okay, great. Fantastic. Thank you. Kristi?
I have nothing tonight. Thank you.
Tyler? IT?
Nothing tonight. Thank you.
City Clerk?
Have nothing. Thank you.
Okay. All righty. Councilmember Duncan?
I just have one question for John. It's, do you think, because some of my neighbors have come to me and asked, is this a new survey? So, or did I already take that survey? So does it say new? I don't remember. It did.
Well, the survey is titled completely differently. So the first one was titled as a public safety survey, and this one is a, a street funding voter opinion survey. So it does come in in the text message that way and ask them to participate. And we did try to, in, in the advertisement, putting it out to, to clarify that this was a different survey. But admittedly, it would kind of look the same. So I see how some, there's a possibility someone could get confused and think it's the, the same survey until they actually read it and see that it's actually titled differently.
Yes, so then I think that's part of your, your lower numbers. Okay, so I, I just want to say congratulations to our awesome Fountain PD on being nominated and selected as the Community Change Maker Award. Awesome. Great to see that out there. You know, like I'm dressed, today is Flag Day. I have on my red, white, and blue. And so I just want you to look up what, you know, our flag and what it means. It means that we should be united. And there's a lot of dissension going on in our communities, and, you know, we look at the news. So we, we need to look at our nation and our history, and we need to reunite. So that's all I have.
Thank you. Councilmember Applegate?
I don't have anything.